Good evening, welcome to the Red Hook Town Board meeting of August 26th, 2020. Would you be kind enough to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
And to the Republic, all which stands.
One nation, under God.
Under God.
Invisible.
Whoever.
Invisible.
Injustice.
And justice for all.
I pledge allegiance to the United States.
Okay. There we go, we had some duplication there with the pandas YouTube apologies. Thank you, everyone. We have just a couple announcements for this evening. First of all, we would like to let you know that community action is having yet another event, they had a food giveaway. We announced at the last meeting, that was August 19th, I believe, August 31st, coming up on this Monday. They are having an annual ice cream and back to school giveaway event. That's 10 to 3:00. And that's at 44 East Market Street. It's ice cream, book bags, shoes and socks, all items are new and free. And it's for children who are in the Red Hook Central School District. And it's first come, first served while supplies last. And if you have any questions, they ask that you call them at 876-1611. The other announcements that we have to make are regarding projects that we have underway and some good news. That next week, we expect to open our rec parks. We're shooting for Wednesday, September 2nd. We have a letter from our engineers that they are substantially complete. They're just going through some small punch list items. And so we're happy to announce that. In addition to that, a very long project, the Stony Brook Culvert Project. We're hoping that project will conclude at the latest, also the beginning of next week. So drivers who have been patiently going around that project for quite some time will be happy to know that the road should be open at the beginning or middle of the week. We will send out notifications with the exact days. And that's another reason why we encourage you to go to our website, redhook.org, sign up for notify me, we can send you emails, we can even send you a text. And it's only on subject matters that you are interested in. Okay, and other projects, we will be beginning this fall, our street light replacement project. This is a project we've been working on for quite some time to take over ownership of the streetlights and to replace them with LED lights. It will accomplish two things, it will put us in control of the type of lighting. And it will also allow us to put in environmentally friendly lighting and to importantly, save some money for our taxpayers. So you'll be seeing later this fall, a construction work related to that. We expect that it'll take a couple of weeks' time before they swap out the streetlights. So more on that coming up. So we do have a public hearing scheduled for 7:45. We have a few minutes before 7:45, so I wonder, we don't have any public comments that have been made available to us prior to the meeting. I wonder if we might just jump right on in. Teresa, we have you with us, we have agenda item number one, which is a resolution authorizing the town clerk to advertise a request for sealed bids for the purchase of ice control abrasives, requests for sealed bids for hot mixed asphalt, a request for proposals for various materials and services for 2021. This is something we do each and every year before we go ahead and we buy items necessary for the function of the highway department. We go out and take public bids to try and get the best available pricing. And Teresa, did you want to say anything about that before we go ahead and entertain agenda item number one?
No, it's pretty standard.
Okay, very good. And I will note, one of the things, items is topsoil. And as you probably know, and we'll probably be talking later this week, now that the rec park project is just about complete, we do have some type soil which we can, you know, transfer over to the highway department. So, you know, we should talk about how that can get over there and so on and so forth. But any thoughts about bids, how they might come in this year? Do you have any expectation with gasoline prices low?
No, I don't have a crystal ball on that one, Robert.
All right, very good. All right, so we have a resolution number. Deanna, do we have a number for this resolution?
Seven.
I'm sorry?
Oh gosh, I'm sorry.
Resolution. What number is it? Thirty-seven, I think you're muted, Deanna.
Forty-seven.
Thirty-seven, okay, very good. Dated August 2020, it's authorizing the town clerk to advertise the bids and an RFP for various materials and services for 2021. Okay, and I assume move, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bill O'Neill. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, Bill Hamel?
Aye.
Christine Kane?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Okay, we still have a few minutes. Teresa, you had asked in the past when we have an opportunity to let you, if we could let you go first with your reports. How about trying to squeeze you in before we can even have our public hearing? Would you like to do that, is there anything you'd like to let us know about your report this month on highway?
No, I'm good, thank you, I don't have a report for tonight.
Okay. Okay. Very good. I think, Deanna, we can go ahead and read, if you wouldn't mind, the notice for the public hearing for tonight, which is proposed changes to chapter 63 and 64 Dog and Dog Parks.
Read the whole thing?
Yes, if you could, please.
Notice of public hearing, Town of Red Hook. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on August 26th, 2020, at 7:45 PM local time at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, 12571, to hear all interested persons on a proposal, local law entitled, "A Local Law to Amend Chapter 63 of the Code of the Town of Red Hook Entitled Dogs" and "To amend Chapter 64 of the Code of the Town of Red Hook Entitled Dog Parks." The proposed local law. "The purpose of this law is to modify regulations regarding the control of the dog population in the Town of Red Hook. The Town of Red Hook's means of enforcing said regulations and the use of municipal dog parks, including the dog park established within the Town of Rhinebeck Town Park at Oriole Mills Road in the Town of Red Hook. This law will verify existing dog control regulations, provide the Town of Red Hook additional means of enforcing said dog control regulations, and will better facilitate the public use of dog parks for recreation and enjoyment. Due to the ongoing COVID pandemic, the Town Hall is closed to the general public until further notice. Pursuant to Executive Order Number 2202.1, as extended issued by Governor Cuomo and advisories issued by federal, state and local officials related to the COVID-19 virus, the public will not be permitted to attend in person. Board members are expected to participate in the public hearing via teleconference or video conference. Please refer to the meeting agenda to be posted on the Town website at https://www.rehock.org, listing the specific link which will allow the public to view and listen to the proceedings live, which is expected to be available at pandaTV.org. Click on "Watch Live." Project documents will be posted with the meeting agenda on the Town's website. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard as follows. One, the public is encouraged to submit written comments by email or telephone in advance of the hearing to rmcian@rehock.org and 845-758-4622 by 4 o'clock PM the day of the hearing. Please note, local law dog park in the subject. Number two, written comments may be dropped in the Town's Dropbox in advance of the hearing at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, 12571 by 4 o'clock PM the day of the hearing. Please observe the recommendations of the CDC regarding distancing and use of masks. Three, all comments so received in advance of the hearing will be noted in the hearing record. Interested persons may also comment by email or telephone to rmcian@rehock.org and 845-758-4622 on the date of the hearing, from the time of opening the hearing until the close of the hearing. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such a case, please notify the town clerk in advance at the above address or by phone, 845-758-4606, so that arrangements can be made. By order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook dated August 26th, 2020. Deanna Cochran, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook.
Robert, you're muted.
Very good. So Bill Hamel, would you like to take a minute, Christine Shaw, and maybe describe very briefly the changes to both chapters of the code?
I can start by saying that the majority of the changes have to do with removing the concept of the dog park entry tag from the dog park provisions. So a lot of the changes that you see there are really related to that. And then we changed, we are changing the provisions regarding redemption fees to allow for additional redemption fees relating to shelter costs, food and veterinary costs, to the extent the dog is seized. And then the typical, including the typical empowerment fees, the administrative fees that were previously provided. So we have a, we will have a separate resolution from now on that would get approved every year when you're approving the rest of the fees for different types of things, such as building permits, that you will look at, so you can update that on an annual basis. And Bill, I don't know if you want to add anything then?
No, I think you covered it. Wasn't the issue about the dog collar, the tag?
The tag?
We were removing the requirement that they have to get a, wear a special collar, tag on their collar when they're in the dog park.
Right, that seemed to be determined by the clerks that were administering it to be somewhat unwieldy. And they made the decision that as long as the dogs were properly licensed,
Right.
that would be sufficient.
Yeah, and I would add, we want to encourage people to take advantage of that facility, which is on Oriole Mills, right near Yance Road. And if you're familiar with some of the Rhinebeck baseball fields, practice fields there, it's adjoining to that. Okay. Any questions? If not, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, Bill Hamel?
Aye.
Christine Kane?
Aye.
Testa?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you both, Bill Hamel and Chris Shaw, for working on this. Small changes, but important changes necessary. We have found ourselves spending too much time and too much money on some of these custody issues. And so this really gives us the type of flexibility we need in order to make sure the taxpayers are protected. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the proposed changes in the legislation. And that is resolution number 38 dated August 26th, amending chapter 63 and 64 Dogs and Dog Parks. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, Bill O'Neill?
Yes.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Christine Kane?
Aye.
Very good, thank you very much, the resolution passes. We are now moving on to agenda item number three. It's a resolution to amend our harassment policies. And this is at the direction of the Governor's Office to include some changes. Chris Shaw, could you explain to the folks at home?
Sure, Ann has taken the lead on bringing this forward. Last year, you might remember, we adopted a version of the recommended Governor's Policies for Combating Sexual Harassment. And this is, becomes a part of our employee manual. And so we now have a recommendation from NYMER to update all of our policies relating to harassment and discrimination to have a consistent methodology for dealing with investigation and follow-up of any kind of complaints. We also have a requirement for training of our employees and officers in these anti-harassment policies. So this will become a part of the Town's employment policies and will apply to not just our employees, but to everybody who's within our workplace. So it's a very significant set of policies that all employees and town officers need to be aware of and need to comply with.
And I would add that it's, sorry, it's a, it's a document that I'm sure that we'll be continuing to work on moving forward and will review each and every year as part of our policies procedure review. Did any of the Town Board members have any questions on this proposed change to the Town of Red Hook's policy against discrimination and harassment? No?
No.
Okay.
Seems to be straightforward.
Okay, good, good. So I would move that we approve resolution number 39, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bill O'Neill. Okay, if there's no further discussion, all in favor, Christine Kane?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Bill Hamel?
Aye.
Very good, thank you very much. So that is agenda item number three. And we are actually a few minutes ahead of schedule. So if we could, I'm going to just jump back and give, since we didn't have a first meeting of the month, we had some special meetings, do just a little bit of financial review for the month of July. If that's okay. And let's see. We will, if you'll be patient with me, the supervisors' report for the period ending July 31st. And I'll just screen share with you. All right. So we began the month with an opening balance of $7,315,115.90. We had receipts of $2 million, most of which were account transfers from many of our funds to capital projects, for example. Disbursements of $2,946,000. We had an ending monthly balance on July 31st of $6,370,862. You also have your variance reports and your budget adjustments that were suggested by Ann Conway. Many of those adjustments are related to moving monies into the capital accounts to pay off the projects that are underway. And I would like to add, we've been paying attention to the revenue streams that are part and parcel of our budgets and our operations here. And we're looking at sales tax revenue. And we spoke about March, April and May. We've received the June and July numbers from the Comptroller's Office. June was a little better, though still down. July unfortunately is down further than June was. So we're paying attention to those revenues. And, you know, we'll factor that in when we start a budgeting process for 2021, which will begin actually very soon, so I'll look for that. We'll be reaching out to the department heads to get their input. Okay, we are close enough to 8 o'clock. And agenda item number four, I'm sorry, I didn't ask for a motion to approve the budget adjustments. May I do that now? Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, we got three seconds there, we'll go with Bill Hamel. All in favor, Bill O'Neill?
Aye.
Christine Kane?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, so agenda item number four is a discussion about elections, polling sites. And so I've asked, we have with us tonight Ira Margulies, who is Deputy Commissioner of Dutchess County Board of Elections. And I thought it important for somebody involved with elections to explain to our residents the options that are available for voting. They see on the news, discussion about the post office and ballots and mail-in ballots and in-person opportunities. And I thought it would be helpful if Ira could just explain to us what's new this year and what's new as of the last couple of years, as far as how to vote. So Ira, are you there with us? Maybe so, maybe not. We had him there, there you are. Ira, are you muted?
Robert, I think you need to stop.
Can you hear me now, Robert?
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Okay, sorry about that.
No worries, Ira, thank you very much for joining us, I appreciate it. I know you've put in a long day in the office, but we appreciate that you're here in the evening. So I thought it might be helpful for our residents if you could just explain to them the different ways that they can vote this year, and in particular, in a COVID year, just how important some of those ways may be for them.
Absolutely, there's been a lot of changes in the past year. If you've been watching the news at all, you know that. So locally in New York, the big news lately is that you are allowed to cast an absentee ballot because of fear of transmission of the COVID-19 virus. So whereas previously, this was not a allowable excuse to obtain an absentee ballot in New York, this has recently changed. You are allowed to apply for an absentee ballot and you are supposed to select the option for temporary illness in order to express that you are trying to avoid transmission of COVID-19. So that is one way that you are able to cast your vote this year, is by absentee ballot. Right now, you can apply for an absentee ballot either through the mail, through email, fax or by phone, any of those methods are allowable to apply for an absentee ballot. Starting hopefully by the end of this week, we're actually going to have a live web portal where residents can apply for their absentee ballot. So it'll be kind of like when you fill in a contact form on a website, you'll put in your information and that will directly apply for an absentee ballot for you without ever having to touch a piece of paper. So that's coming within the next couple of days. The second way that you're able to vote this year is going to be through early voting. In Dutchess County, we have five early voting sites around the county. The one closest for you guys is probably going to be Rhinebeck Town Hall. Also, there is going to be one at the Board of Elections Office in the city of Poughkeepsie, Boardman Road Library in the Town of Poughkeepsie. We are required to have a poll site in the most populous town in the county. So Town of Poughkeepsie is going to have one now. Fishkill Town Hall and Millbrook, Millbrook Firehouse. So any of those polling places, anyone from anywhere in the county can show up to those polling places and vote. The hours do vary, but it's open for nine days prior to Election Day. So from October 24th through November 1st, early voting is open. Then on November 3rd, we are going to have voting, just like we do every other year. Everyone's regular polling place is going to be open. We do have six polling places slated to be open in the Town of Red Hook. None of them, as of right now, have changed. The ones adopted by resolution are the Tivoli Firehouse, Red Hook High School, St. John's Reform, St. John's Episcopal, Red Hook Firehouse and the Town Hall. We are examining some poll site changes around the county, mainly due to poll sites that are in high-risk environments, such as nursing homes. So there are a few changes happening around the county, but there's nothing planned right now as a change for Red Hook. A couple of other pieces of information that's of interest, I think, to people, new laws that were just passed with absentee ballots. In the past, there's been some concern, especially in the state of New York, when you cast an absentee ballot, if you, for instance, forget to sign the envelope or seal the envelope, your ballot is in danger of not being counted. The Governor did just sign legislation where we will be reviewing your ballots as they come in. And if there's a problem like that with your ballot, you're going to be informed of it and given a chance to correct your ballot to make sure your vote counts. So for people who are concerned that voting through the mail, you know, gives a higher chance of your vote not counting, hopefully that assages some of those fears. We are going to be doing a mailing. We have to get this mailing out by September 8th is the drop dead date for this mailing that's going to explain all of these options for voting and what your polling place is on Election Day and your different options for applying for an absentee ballot. That's going to be going to every household in Dutchess County. And that will be going out the first week in September. So every resident in Red Hook, who is a registered voter, should be receiving all of this information by mail from the county. So, you know, hopefully with all of these different options, we're able to kind of spread out the density of voting between the three options of early voting, absentee voting and voting in person on Election Day. Keep the density of people to a minimum. As far as COVID precautions are concerned, we are hiring extra employees to be at the poll sites. There's going to be somebody who's in charge of social distancing, making sure that not too many people enter the poll site at a time, keeping people at a safe distance from each other. There's also going to be someone there cleaning the poll site throughout the day to prevent surface transmission. So while nothing in 2020 is perfect or predictable, we do have, I think, a pretty good plan going forward to give everyone the opportunity to vote in this important election. I, you know, I do want to stress, I'm here for informational purposes, I can't speak on behalf of the board. So if you guys have questions or concerns, I'm happy to hear them, but I may not be able to give definite answers because, you know, these things do have to be discussed by both commissioners. You know, I can't speak for the board on all matters, but I'm happy to hear any questions or concern you guys might have.
Well, that's very helpful. And will you have a lot of this on your website? And will there be some documents or some videos or something that we can put on our website to help inform our residents? Because I think the sooner they know, I think the better. They can, they can develop a They can they can develop a plan that works for them.
Yeah, absolutely. We're coming out with educational materials as fast as we can. We have been in a little bit of a holding pattern, waiting for these laws to be signed, of course. But we just came out with our first educational video this week. We plan to follow that up with several more. So hopefully we can get to as many people as possible.
Okay. And then, you know, one of the other things that we wanted to discuss tonight and some of the folks that are joining us, in particular, want to talk about a polling site, but I would like to start with saying, is there a process that you use to review each polling site all over again, given that we are in this COVID scenario and likely to be in this scenario come November third? So for example, I think about the sites that you have mentioned, and I don't have the dimensions and I don't have the numbers of voters. But a couple come to mind, and one of them is Town Hall here. We host two election districts, and I happen to be here as well as the other employees in Town Hall on election. The the last presidential election in 2016, and I can tell you, we had a line going through out our hallways. And there would be no safe way for us that I can imagine, and you know, I'm not not the expert, to accommodate two election districts here in Town Hall. And I worry about some of the folks that are in that district, maybe in those districts, maybe vulnerable population. We're directly across the street from our senior housing. I want to make sure that those folks, you know, have a, you know, a comfortable experience if they decide to come in person. And I don't know how logistically that's going to happen. We can certainly close. And and Town Hall right now is closed to the public, so that's a whole nother question is how we're willing to make this space available. And in particular, in Red Hook, we've had the support and cooperation of the schools. Now, we don't know what they'll be doing on November third either, but what we do know is that they have some very large spaces that they can perhaps offer up that would be safer. They just, you know, are so much larger than what we have here in Town Hall. And so I can't speak for the other town board members, but I would really ask you to please consider, you know, in our municipality, taking a look at the spatial requirements and the social distancing requirements. And the other thing I wanted to ask is, are your election workers required to wear masks when they're working in the site? Because I remember voting in the primary this year and finding election workers who had their masks down or did not have them on while they were in in that space.
Sure. Thank you, Robert. Yes. So if there is a concern that a polling place is going to be a problem, that's absolutely something that we're willing to review. I can tell you that every single polling place in the county is is not necessarily being reviewed for square footage. Just holding on to the polling places that we have is an extremely difficult task at this time. As as you mentioned, you know, there are concerns for the the host sites. So our our biggest concern has been trying not to close sites because that would lead to more density of people in 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 the sites that remain. If there is a safe alternative, like you mentioned, maybe we can move something from the Town Hall to the school. It's absolutely something that, you know, I'll bring to the board to consider. I would urge you, if you want this to be taken up, you know, before the general election, to please write a letter to both commissioners. This way it it finds its way onto the agenda as quickly as possible. But I will bring it up tomorrow when I get to the office and we'll see if if the alternative site can meet all the legal requirements. As far as the poll workers, they are absolutely told that they need to be wearing their mask all the time. We do have coordinators who are supposed to be going from site to site to make sure that they are complying. Of course, it's not a perfect world, so if if you do see someone not doing what they're supposed to be doing, we'd appreciate it if you let us know. There are very few of us who work full-time at the Board of Elections and a hundred and five sites, so we can't be everywhere at once. But it we have been very much stressing to them that they need to wear their masks while they're at work.
Okay, very good. Well, some of the folks that are with us are from Bard College. And as you know, prior to COVID, we sent, I don't know what number resolution, but certainly we've sent several in the past outlining the sort of absurdity of trying to accommodate, especially in a presidential election. I think that's very important that we reiterate that that this year is a presidential election. But the number of voters in that small site in in the church community room, if you will. You know, there are lines outside of there, and we've asked that the Board of Elections, please consider the very large multipurpose room or another large space at Bard College. As you know, as you mentioned, I think even earlier, the the districts are, the intent is that they be located, the polling sites where the majority of the voters are. And we have a a wonderful church. My daughter was baptized there. But it's just not sufficient for this purpose. And so now, taking a look at not only a presidential, but in a COVID year. And, you know, we we have, we have another resolution for you, Ira. This is the second one this year that we're in this evening. And so some of the folks from Bard had asked that they be given an opportunity to to make a very small presentation. I think Jonathan Becker is with us tonight.
Yes, so I'm here together with Adrian Costa, Sadia Saba, Sarah Devere. Adrian and Sadia are students. Sarah is a former student who now works at the Center for Civic Engagement. And we have a presentation. I I think what I would say is under normal circumstances, and I think the board voted for this pre-COVID, it makes sense to have a polling station at Bard. Under COVID, it is critical to have a polling station at Bard College. So we're going to proceed with a PowerPoint. And I think you can all see this. Can you all see this? Is that good?
Yes.
All right, fantastic. So we're going to begin with Adrian.
Perfect. Okay, thank you, Jonathan. Thank you, everyone. Again, my name is Adrian Costa, and I've been working with Election at Bard for the past three years. I'm going on to my fourth year, and I also happen to be the speaker for the student body, which means I was elected to represent the student body in all sorts of matters. But I'm here today to talk to you guys about what we, working with Election at Bard, have kind of come across as obstacles to all people kind of trying to make their voice heard through elections, which is the very backbone of, you know, what a democracy is. And so the first picture that you see here is a picture of the St. John's polling site. It is during an off-year primary election, so it is, you know, one of the more not attended election cycle seasons. And yet you have a kind of, you have a line of people, about of about six people running through the door. And the second picture here, you again have an off-year election day. So this is on November in 2018, and the line still continues to exist out out the door. And that day specifically was a very excuse. Sorry, that day particularly was like a very rainy day, so it was really unfortunate for a lot of people. Another perspective of that same day was to, you can notice that there are two lines. One of the lines on the right-hand side is a line to kind of collect your ballot. And then on the other side, it's a line to to wait for a polling booth to be available. And as you can notice, you can see that there are about like one or two visible in the picture, but there are about like four polling booths in total at this site. So you can see that even even waiting for a ballot and waiting to cast your ballot, there is still some, you know, discrepancy with people waiting in line and people. Obviously, during a COVID age, like there won't be any sort of social distancing kind of like feasible in this kind of space. But we can look at the Bard College's multipurpose room. If we can go, obviously, it's extremely spacious and large. It has, the lower canopy is about twenty and a half feet high, and the room is about fifty-eight feet in length. And so it's substantially bigger than any sort of than the St. John's polling site. And as you can see, it can comfortably hold a lot more people. This was a specific event where Bard was debating West Point. And obviously, as you can see, like it holds a lot more people more comfortably. Obviously, this would not be the setup during the election day. But like just the sheer size, as you can tell, is able to kind of accommodate social distancing measures for both workers and all voters. So if we can look more specifically at the layout of the Berrytown site versus the Bard College NPR site, the length of the St. John's polling site is about thirty-eight point five feet and nineteen point five width. And as you can see, it says that it spaciously accommodates seven voting booths. But it was taken, but a picture was taken two years after that survey, and it shows that only about four polling booths can be accommodated in that space. And so, and even less so because there have been newer renovations that have happened in that space that have included bathrooms, have taken kind of taken more space away from polling booths and being able to use that space to social distance or to do any other appropriate things. On the contrary, you have the Bard multipurpose room, which is fifty-eight feet and thirty-six feet wide and length and wide appropriately. And it also has about three different egresses, including the one that you use to enter into the space. So it has a lot more spaces to kind of enter and exit the space, and it can be a lot more flexible when it comes to maneuvering, social distancing, and things and things like that. And yeah, this picture even more so is extremely telling of the difference between the two spaces because the smaller circle is the St. John's space. Before renovations took away even more square footage, and the Bard multipurpose room is the larger square, and it's about three times bigger than the church community room. So just you can see the, just the amount of space that we can use if the polling site was to be utilized in the NPR. Yes, and I think I'm going to pass it off to my colleague Sadia, so she can talk to you about a little about the experience of voting at St. John's.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sadia, and I'm a rising senior at Bard College. And this is going to be my third year working with Election at Bard. So I wanted to tell you all a little bit about the experience waiting online to vote at the Berrytown polling site. So if you look at this photograph here, it was taken during the November two thousand and eighteen election. And you can see that it was a raining night, and there are tents. And those tents were put up by Bard College and the Center for Civic Engagement and not the Board of Elections, just because the line was going out the door and people had to wait outside. And this actually discouraged a lot of voters. I worked this election cycle, and there were a lot of times when students would come up to us and say, hey, like I just finished classes. It's 5:00 PM. The lines are going to be so long out there, and I really don't feel like waiting. So that's just an example of voter suppression in this case. As you can see here, there's another angle of everyone waiting outside. You can see that it's not just Bard students outside. There's families, there's children outside waiting. And you can probably imagine how this case would look even more severe during the pandemic where, you know, six-feet regulations would be almost impossible in this space. And what you're looking at here is the street outside of St. John's Church. And you'll see that there is no sidewalk. And so if you like put together all the conditions of like weather conditions, no sidewalk, huge line of voters, it's like almost physically impossible to safely accommodate all those people, especially when there's, you know, cars on the road driving quick. So it's definitely a safety issue over here. And in comparison, I want to show you all what it's like to wait out, wait to vote at Bard. So on the left, you'll see the hallway that leads into the multipurpose room or the NPR. And the photo on the right shows the hallway as it loops around. So you'll see it's a lot more spacious. Amazingly, there's a ceiling, so weather conditions won't be an issue here, you know. And also in terms of the COVID nineteen guidelines, the hallways are at least six feet in width in all areas. So the COVID guidelines will be very easy to follow here. And it's also very much more handicap accessible. We have handicap parking spots, and the entrances to the building are also handicap accessible. So now I'm going to take this off with Sarah, who's going to be telling you more about the road to vote at St. John's.
Hi, everyone. As Jonathan stated before, Adrian and Sadia started speaking. My name is Sarah Devere. I work for the Center for Civic Engagement now. I used to be a Bard student, graduated in 2017. And while I was not a voter at Berrytown, as a student, I was a voter at Berrytown the two years that I lived in staff housing at Bard. So this is another angle of the road, County Route 103, that Sadia was just speaking about. As you can see, again, there are no shoulders, there's no sidewalk. It's very physically challenging for Bard students to even get to vote. Many, many Bard students do not have cars or access to vehicles. It's even more challenging right now. Typically, we provide a shuttle service to the polls on Election Day. It's even more difficult right now with the Transportation Department and Bard College trying to be as safe as possible by implementing cleaning in between each use of the vehicles that we own at Bard. So that would even add more wait time for voters in between each cycle to transportation cycle to the voting place, back from the voting place, and to be cleaned before picking up more voters. Similarly, on that same note, River Road, aka County Route 103, is another issue. Here's another angle of the absolute lack of shoulders, absolute lack of sidewalks. Students cannot walk to the voting pole. But another, another point of interest is that Election Day is one of the only times when Bard vehicles and Bard drivers are allowed by Transportation Department at Bard College to even be on this road. Typically, Bard drivers and Bard vehicles are advised to use 9G rather than County Route 103. And when asked, the Director of Transportation, Jeff Smith, stated that 103 is not safe for larger vehicles or large larger larger accommodations of an increased traffic on Voting Day. He specifically stated that the winding curves, the large overhanging trees, the stone walls, the many deer that could come out any point, and blind spots, in addition to it being a county route not built for this excess traffic, all make it very unsafe to be on this road, especially as you saw in the previous pictures that Sadia was referring to, when it's dark, when it's rainy, and when voters might be driving fast. If we're trying to space out voters in a line more than six feet apart, that could easily be in an active parking lot, driveway, or on this active road, which again has, is a county, is a county road, and so therefore doesn't even have that much lighting on it either. So we're very concerned by about voter access. The last thing that we wanted to specifically show you is the bus stop. This is the main bus stop at Bard College, which is accessible by shuttle. But it also specifically is a county bus stop as well. So the bus stop is utilized by the Loop Bus Route C. And we we would specifically also, if the polling place got moved to Bard, we would be able to accommodate folks who utilize public transportation as well. The St. John's Church does not have the same accessibility through the Loop Bus.
Thank you. It's Jonathan. I'm just going to conclude with a couple of little things. So being professor, and I want to thank especially Adrian and Sadia, who are current students, who have put a lot of effort into this, as Sarah, as a proud alumna. I just want to say a couple of things because I'm a teacher of comparative politics, and I think it's worth saying. I just wanna say a couple of things, because I'm a teacher of comparative politics, and I think it's worth saying. The first is, this is an embarrassment, as far as I'm concerned. This is that the percentage of American voters compared to other advanced industrial uh democracy. Um, and see how low we are. Um, and this chart talks about turnout by age. And what you see is that people who are eighteen to twenty-nine and even eighteen to twenty-four more uh are the lowest group of voters, uh people who vote, which is particularly important because you make uh patterns for life. Um, there have been a lot of conversations um about uh who uh should vote um and whether students should vote. Um, this goes back to in my time at Bard. I've been here twenty-three years. Back in nineteen ninety-nine, there was a county commission put together. Mark Molinaro, the current county executive was part of that. And they asked whether students have the right to vote, and they asked uh how this should happen. And then the committee concluded of three county officials um that not only is it clear that students have to write the right to vote where they live and study, but that the county should encourage students uh in their voting. And I think what we see here, to cycle back to the beginning, is the following. Under regular circumstances, just to sum up, under regular circumstances, the polling station should be actually in Anadale and Hudson, uh, which is a far better site um than the St. John's Episcopal uh Church. It's safer, it's more accessible by foot, it's accessible by foot for more than half of the voters of District Five. It is accessible via public transportation. State law says wherever possible, polling stations should be accessible via public transportation. That is not the case with the current polling site. It has better handicap access in terms of ramp angles uh as well as parking. Uh, it also has better and more sheltered places for people waiting in line. In fact, uh, St. John's Berrytown has no place for people wearing, uh, waiting in line outside of that uh, which is covered. Um, the current expectation, and again, we're facing this year where we can't put as many people in shuttles, the expectation that people will walk along an unsafe road with no public transportation not only runs contrary to New York State law, it's just not the right thing uh for a town or a county uh to support. Now, the one thing I've heard of, and we've talked about voting, and a lot of you who know me have known I've been involved with this over the years, is people say, well, you know, citizens might be uncomfortable coming to Bard uh to vote, and I understand that. Um, I wanna say, though, that the majority of voters uh in this district live on the Bard campus. That includes faculty, students, and staff. Um, and moreover, that there's tens of thousands of people who visit Bard each year from the town of Red Hook and neighboring communities, who attend concerts, sporting events, participated in our Lifetime Learning Institute. I would say in the twenty-three years I've lived in this community, I've never heard a single person complain about feeling comfortable watching a Red Hook basketball game or soccer game or attending a high school concert on campus or going to the post-prom party, which happens here all the time. So I think people here are are plenty comfortable. And lastly, about COVID, Bard is prepared to make sure that the campus center is secure and ready for Voting Day. We will remove uh all non-essential activities that go on there. We will create pathways that people can be in the hall uh safely. Again, we are talking about a space which has three times uh more uh surface space. And if you add in the air above, because the multipurpose room has a very high ceiling, it's a far safer place as well in terms of access uh and egress. Um, prior to COVID, uh, voting, we felt that people should vote on campus. And this board has at least twice, that I can recall, have uh voted similarly. It's safer, it's ethical, it supports democracy, it fights cynicism against young people who believe they're being singled out. But with COVID, it would be almost grossly negligent uh to have polling at uh St. John's Berrytown. I'm also the son of a poll worker. My eighty-nine-year-old father has worked at the polling station there for more than a decade. It is, there is physically no way to distance there. It is simply impossible. Um, so uh we believe that the the Bard is the right place for the future. And we believe in this election, it is absolutely essential that the town board take action. We'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them, but we really appreciate you listening to us and giving us the opportunity to speak about this really uh super important issue. So thank you.
Thanks, Jonathan. Did any of the board members have any questions for Jonathan or anyone else? No?
Nope.
Okay.
No, I don't have a particular question, but I wanted to to thank you for that presentation. I thought it was very well done and provides a lot of good information uh for us to use and for the community. Anybody who's watching as this is being livestreamed to um understand. Not only ongoing issues, because I I worked as a poll worker in Berrytown also for a number of years. So um there are always um crowding issues there. And as you mentioned, it's very dark, and if it's rainy, it's really, really dark there. And not to mention, um, you know, lines out in the rain or bad, any other bad weather. Um, but this year with, you know, COVID restrictions, and I um, I thank you for pointing out that um, you know, there's gonna be even more issues than regularly, right? Because of COVID and extra um cleaning that will be needed uh in between the shuttles that Bard would normally run for the students to get down there. Uh, and I also, you know, we don't know what that will do to any um loop bus runs uh timewise during that time either. So then there are very important points, and I thank you for bringing them up.
Uh Supervisor McKeon, could I briefly respond?
Sure. And Ira, if you would add in your response, uh, an explanation to folks at home, who makes the decision on polling sites?
That, that was gonna be the first thing I addressed. Um, uh, well, first of all, I'd just like to thank Adrian and Sadia and Sarah for putting together a really fantastic presentation there. I think uh you hit, you covered all the bases. Um, I do want it to be known that uh my boss commissioner, Soto, has expressed her support for moving the polling place. Um, Bard is a better polling place, in her opinion. The board is made up of two commissioners, one from each of the two major political parties. And decisions like where a poll site can be have to be agreed upon by both commissioners. Um, this is not the first time this issue's been brought up, as uh Supervisor McKeon uh said earlier. Um, I've actually worked at the Board of Elections for uh fourteen years under three different Democratic commissioners, and all three of them have supported moving this polling site. It's just not something that can be done unilaterally. Um, there was a couple of years ago, even a lawsuit between the two commissioners to try to move a poll site onto uh the campus of a different college in Duchess County. And the judge ruled that the, the one commissioner did not have standing to bring the lawsuit against the other commissioner. So um at some point, the hands are tied if we cannot get unanimous consent between the two commissioners. Um, that being said, uh, it's, it's an issue that we continue to um consider every year. Um, and I know that you do have the full support of uh Commissioner Soto for moving the, the polling place. Um, it's just a matter of getting consent from uh the other commissioner in order to do so.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ira.
Yes.
I just know from my own personal experience, I have two daughters who attended Skidmore College up in Saratoga Springs. They have a polling site there. There's never been an issue. It's never been politicized. And I think as Jonas, Jonathan has spoken about, we wanna do everything to um encourage everyone to vote, to uh make them feel comfortable and safe to vote. Um, I wanna reiterate again my concern about having two election sites in Town Hall. And uh in particular, uh, many seniors who uh are in those election districts, I wanna make sure that they are aware of all the options available to them, but also that we don't put them in a, in a situation. We have no indoor space to accommodate those people online safely with, with COVID. So we have a similar situation here. Um, and so we would ask you to please take a look at, at this site as well and any other that we, we may have missed. But I think these are the two that really need your attention. We wouldn't ask you to, to do all six. And we'll help you with that if, you know, reaching out to the school to see what we're, would make available.
Uh, I will absolutely bring this uh to the board tomorrow. So I, I appreciate the presentation, and uh we certainly hear everybody's concerns.
Okay. Thank you, Ira, very much. Um, and then lastly, we do have a resolution, yet another resolution. I think this is now, uh, are we on forty, Deanna? Are we on thirty-nine?
Forty.
We're on forty. It's a resolution regarding Election District number five. And I don't know that anybody mentioned this, but the Election District has um currently uh more registered voters than are recommended for a single election district. I know in the past that we have had resolutions asking that a polling site be located at Bard College, leaving one in Berrytown. Um, I think we all agree now that uh we have a COVID situation. It's a presidential election, um, that it's just not feasible to have um Election District number five vote in um, in the church, St. John's. And so that's why we have Resolution number forty. And it speaks to the number of registered voters being over nine hundred and fifty. And so if you look at those images that were provided, imagine um a thousand and thirty-six people uh going to vote in that very small space. And um I would like to add, not only a renovation's been done, but I, I think we heard Ira say that there's going to be additional workers working. And the more workers that are working, it's the more difficult it becomes to actually do that social distancing that's necessary uh for people to be safe. Are there any questions about uh Resolution number forty, Town Board? It reiterates many of the points that have been made. Okay. If not, I would uh so move that we adopt Resolution number forty, um, which calls for the Town Board to communicate the need to locate a polling site at Bard College for safe, convenient access by the registered voters of Election District Five. And I would re, reiterate something that um some of the Town Board members already know. I've received several phone calls from residents in our community wondering, what are we doing about the fact that Bard College is coming back? The student population is coming back, and how can we keep them safe um from potential COVID um exposure? And I, I just wanna share with you that all of the elected officials have been on conference calls and meetings every week with the college. They are doing terrific work with testing the students. Many of them have been tested three times already, and we're still in August. Um, they're doing a staggered opening. I'm happy to report, at least as of today, today's call, that there are zero positives on the Bard College campus. I know you've been watching the news and seeing several hundreds. I think uh Birmingham, Alabama has uh something like nine hundred and some positives. Um, so they're doing a terrific job. And so when we talk about how can we keep each other, because they're part of our community, how can we keep each other safe? Um, it's very important that we allow for um the safe exercising of our right to vote. And so we need to ensure that we have very large spaces, they're staffed appropriately, and that people feel comfortable voting, because the last thing we want them to do is not to exercise that right. It's Resolution number forty. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Christine. Is there any further discussion, any other comments anybody wants to make?
Uh, I was just wondering, um, Ira, would it be helpful for you to have this presentation? Because I'm sure uh Jonathan and his team there could get you a copy of it.
Uh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I, I'd be happy to bring that to the commissioners. I think it would be impactful.
We'd be happy to send.
Jonathan, can you make that happen?
I can make it happen in about five minutes.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
Sounds like a game show. Okay. Um, yeah, we have a second. All in favor, Bill O'Neill?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Bill Hamel?
Aye.
Okay, the resolution passes. Thank you all for joining us. Uh, Ira, thank you again for um outlining for residents the, the various ways that they can vote this year. I know that that's important, and this, as soon as we can get out that information, I think uh the better.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Ira. Thank you.
Thank you, Ira.
Jonathan and the election at Bard team.
You.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Have a nice evening. Uh, we are on Agenda Item number five. Um, it's just a simple motion to appoint our uh attorney for the town's firm, Rodenhausen Shaw, as the attorneys to represent us in certiorari matters filed in two thousand and twenty. Uh, for folks who aren't familiar with that term, um occasionally there'll be a uh legal action regarding tax assessments. And so uh when our attorney to the town years ago um broke off and uh worked for a different firm, we maintained this original firm just for the small portion of our government matters. And so with the staffing uh that's been increased in, in our uh attorney to the town's firm, we now have the capability um to uh do that last little bit of business with our attorneys as well. We're on the phone with them all the time, and so it makes sense that we go ahead and do that. Any questions about that? Okay. Uh, I would like to make a motion that we appoint Rodenhausen Shaw as the attorneys to represent the town in certiorari matters. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I think we got Bill Hamel on that one. All in favor, Christine Kane?
Aye.
Bill O'Neill?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, what are the four?
Director, I just wanna clarify for the board that the intention is that we would have Victor continue to manage the matters that are already underway and that we were looking to deal with the new matters, okay? Because we're not gonna duplicate efforts in that way.
Right. Yep, that's why the motion is filed in two thousand and twenty. Yep. Thank you very much. Um, so we have uh just some reports, and uh it's eight forty. If we could do some quick uh summary of some of our board and department reports. And I'll start out with the Assessor's Office. Um, our assessor, Cheryl Casluga, talks about having uh two SCAR, Small Claims petitions. One has been settled, and one uh relates to a petition filed by twenty-five Old Farm Road um entering uh new construction homes and inventory. In July, we had sales of nineteen within the township and the villages. And they ranged uh all the way from uh thirty-five thousand dollars up to two million dollars. Um, and that is the update from the Assessor's Department. Bill, would you like to, Bill Hamel, would you like to give a very brief report on the water district?
Certainly. Um, we actually had a meeting uh outside at Town Hall at the picnic tables, socially distanced and masked. And I got updated for June and July. Um, they have pumped uh about thirty percent more water both months. But according to uh Hank and Fer- and Fernando, uh, it was a result in one month that Bard had uh acquired more water. Um, and the other month, the village was doing some testing for um when we, the town accommodates the village for water. So that was the increase, but um other than that, um, everything else has been good. The water still tests great. Um, there was a little bit of uh, there were some complaints about dirty water, but those dirty water complaints occurred at the time when the highway department was doing some work on like Aspenol and other places. And uh the pipes are not new, and so sometimes the vibration from those pipes, the vibration of all the activity, digging, can unsettle sediment that's inside the pipes or dislodge uh stuff inside the pipes. Uh, but it's all cleared up now. So um glad to report, you know, we have good water, and uh that's really about it.
I imagine there's a little increase in usage, because there's been very little rain, right? If you wanna.
Yes, there, there has. Especially in the, especially in the village.
Bill, um, would you like to update us, Bill O'Neill, on the ZBA's monthly report?
Um, can I interrupt for just a moment?
Sure.
Um, I need to sign off, and I just want to say goodnight. I didn't wanna be rude and just bow out, so you guys have a good week, and thanks for the meeting. Bye.
Thanks, guys. Teresa.
Thanks, Teresa.
Okay. So ZBA, um, Bill, do you have?
I knew, I, all I had, I had was the Building Department and the Police Department, so I don't have the ZBA.
Okay, well, uh, I can do it. Um, there was an application from College Park for two area variances to construct a five hundred square foot addition. And uh the board granted. And uh the board granted the variances um in a unanimous decision. And that was their meeting. Okay, um, building and zoning.
I have that.
You have that one?
Yeah.
All right, I thought.
I thought I had that one.
That's what I thought, too.
We're happy to do it. Do you want me to do?
Go ahead, Bill.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
So for August, um, there has been an uptick this summer, but that's typical, uh, because it's when people do work on their homes um for permits. There were forty-one permits, they did thirty-four inspections. There were sixteen certificates of occupancy or completion. They had one complaint uh and the revenue for the month of August uh for the month of July was eleven thousand seven hundred and nineteen. I do want to point out in my analysis, so I'm always sort of interested in what kind of work is being done, um, that there were forty-one uh applications and permit for permits, but about a third of them were for either pools, hot tubs, uh decks and porches, outside type activities. And um certainly, you know, with the pool being clo- you know, closed to the public and and a variety of other things related to COVID, I I'm not shocked or surprised to see that an uptick in that type of building activity. Um, and that may account for a good amount of that increase. Uh, so that's really all I have to report on the building department.
Okay, and just a correction, the Red Hook pool is open, but it's it's only for lane, lane.
For lanes, for, yeah, for lap swimming, not.
Lap swimming and pro. Just didn't want to. For that, okay, uh, Bill O'Neil, how about a police department report?
Well, the police report for August, the total number of incidents was one hundred and twenty-three. They had five arrests made and no tickets for issue. And that's their report.
Okay, Bill, you were, you wasn't coming through clearly, but I think.
Bill, you're breaking up.
You're breaking up, but we heard you, Bill. We were able to.
Uh, I'll do it again, one hundred and twenty-three total incidents were reported, five arrests were made and no tickets for issue.
Okay, thank you. Jacob, uh, CAC?
Yeah, so uh the CAC met earlier this month via Zoom and um you know, you covered a handful of topics. Um, a lot of things are still on hold, given, you know, perm restrictions. Um, one of the things that we talked about was trying to promote bike culture in town and encouraging people to ride bikes around if you're able to. Um, there's conversation about having a bike program through the community center, um, which seems like it might be a good thing. Um, yeah, I mean, there's, you know, ongoing things. Um, I think the last meeting was the one where we talked about um the sustainable community programs. That was a topic of conversation at the CAC meeting as well. Um, but yeah, still, still moving along with a lot of our projects. Um, you know, the EVans, streetlights, um, you know, a lot of the same things as before.
Okay, thank you, Jacob. Uh, while we have you, did you want to give a brief economic development committee report?
Yeah, so um the DDC has continued to meet every week on Wednesday mornings. Um, so the, I think there's just one report in here right now. Um, but there's been conversation around, um, you know, a variety of things. Um, so trying to promote um businesses like in the village in particular and trying to get more foot traffic um in the the main area of town. Um, the village is having, you know, Friday night music sessions, but they've been rained out the past couple of weeks. Um, you know, the questions about hours of the businesses and trying to get more consistency there. Um, there's a lot of hope, like we talked about before, about Bard returning to um, you know, having classes on campus that that'll help get a little bit more business in the local community. You know, the the real estate market has been, you know, moving along. There's a lot of interest in our area um for people who can work remotely and may be looking for something in a more rural setting, um, which is good. Yeah, there's, you know, a lot of the same stuff, updates on Red Hook Responds, talking about the sewer in the, in the, in the village. Um, so yeah, those are, those are the highlights.
Okay, thank you, Jacob. Uh, Bill O'Neil, we have an LWRP advisory committee uh meeting minutes. Did you want to briefly cover where you all are?
Well, Christine can remind me, but I think, you know, we've met the, we moved over the maps that were redone. And uh we've been having our meetings on Zoom. And uh last meeting a couple of weeks ago was very successful. And I think we're done now until Ted think uh finishes up his uh summary of where we are and everybody's submitted to the state for the initial phase.
Okay, thank you very much. There's a rec commission report. Um, Christine Kane, would you like to do that?
Sure, um, this is from uh August tenth. And uh as uh Robert mentioned, we're getting ready to reopen the park. So the um rec team is very focused on trying to uh work their way through a number of of projects to get them done before that reopening. Um, the team, excuse me, has been really the, you know, the whole time, I should say, while uh the parks have been closed, have been very focused on maintenance and making sure that not only uh was there the opportunity to do a few projects um because it was closed that they might not have gotten to or been able to get to so uh quickly, but also in really making sure that um continued maintenance was done so that when the rec park was open and when uh use can happen, that everything would be up to um snuff for that, particularly for interest, uh, for instance, on the ball fields. Um, all the the mowing has happened there continually and um particular attention to weed management there so that there the um, you know, the infield and the base path lines, for instance, would not be overtaken with weeds. Uh, and so I I really want everyone to know how much uh time and attention they're they're putting in. And so they have been um prioritizing, um, you know, certain types of activities, like getting all the picnic tables rebuilt and ready. Um, work, finishing work on um the pickleball courts and the basketball courts. There is still an issue with the power box uh at the basketball courts that needs to be dealt with. Um, the walking path around um Rec Park East has been um had new stone dust put down on it, so it it is uh ready to be used. Um, as it's so important to mention, again, the rec park is not officially open. Um, we do know that there is some use happening, but we do want to ask people to be aware of the fact that it is not officially open. Um, as Robert mentioned, there are now some um huge dirt piles in both uh Rec Park East and West that need to be dealt with and um some of it kept on site for future use, but some of it moved so to some different areas. Um, that is uh, some of it has already been moved by the highway department, but that they are, they've probably done all that they can, so there's going to have to be um other uh, you know, companies brought in to uh to make that happen. And John Kuhn is getting quotes about all of that. Um, as far as COVID-specific activities, um, they are looking at uh or they have reviewed now um and ordered a sanitizer station, um, which will be put in um near the entrance to the new playground. Um, also looking at the equipment necessary for um sanitizing the playground equipment so that that can be ordered and in place when we need it. Um, as part of the challenger field installation, we had, it came with a, we had to get a particular piece of equipment to be able to maintain that. Um, it unfortunately um does not fit in the current storage facility that we have. Um, so we do have to um find a way to store that, um, particularly during the winter. It's very expensive equipment and we want to um keep it in good shape. So uh again, John Kuhn is look, getting some pricing on um getting a new shed that would fix that. Um, the current shed we have also is very, very full, so I'm sure they could certainly u- use any um extra space uh near and around the um groomer when it goes in there. Um, and continued work on, you know, getting the the dead and dangerous trees taken care of, getting the parking lots ready to go, because they've been used as staging areas during the construction period. Uh, so all of that needs to be um cleaned. And the north parking lot has already been uh restripped. Uh, our team did that themselves rather than have someone come in and do that. Uh, and we're looking at um internet possibility for bringing internet uh to at least Rec Park East and um working with the Red Hook Library uh who's applied for a grant to perhaps make that happen. And one of the benefits of that, if we can make it happen, is it would provide Wi-Fi for security cameras uh to be installed now that we have um done all this major work and we have um major investments in the facilities and new equipment. Um, it would be, um, it would behoove us to have um security down there so that we can uh keep an eye on activities that would be happening in the area. Um, there will be some work done on the pavilion. I'm not sure whether they're going to be able to get all that done, the pavilion ceiling before the opening, but I'm sure they're working hard to make sure that that can happen. And um the the Rec Park West property has a number of trails that have also been um now connected to um the projects that is going to come from the Winnicky Land Trust um purchase of property in that area. Um, so that'll be uh up and running as soon as Winnicky is ready for that. And there's also a mountain trail that has been installed, mowed and has some um stone dust on it. So that's in place and getting a lot of use. And I understand it stood up quite well to the recent rains that we had, so that was um another good sign. So um that's about as brief as I can make, there's a lot of work going on there.
Thank you very much, Christine. We hope people will be happy with what they see next week when the park opens up.
Yeah, me too, it's amazing down there.
Yeah, it is. Okay, uh, Jacob, we have a report for tree preservation commission.
Yes, I'm coming down to it, sorry.
No.
Um, it's like our our um agenda and um items is one hundred and ninety-five pages long for those at home. So it's a lot to go through. Um, so um the tree preservation committee meeting, um, did not meet in person this month. Um, but there are some nice accomplishments, including um the fourteen-year stickers being affixed to the Four Tree City signs in town. Um, fourteen years of being a tree city for Red Hook. Um, the new tree city flag and fourteen-year brass plaque were delivered to town hall. Um, the committee has begun the process of applying for a grant from New York State Urban Forestry Council, um, which should provide up to a thousand dollars in funding for tree planting uh to can use and maintain Tree City USA status for five or more years. So that's something that we qualify for almost three times over. And then finally, the Deveraux Way Planting Site in Upper Red Hook was mowed and trimmed again um by Hot Michael. So thanks to Hot for that. Um, those are all the updates for the tree preservation commission.
Thank you very much, Jacob. Okay, I think that covers all of our report.
You didn't get the animal control.
Oh.
Not that I want any more time, but.
Bill, please do the animals.
But it's quick. So uh there were three incidents in July involving nuisance or injured wildlife calls that they dealt with. And then there were two unlicensed dogs running at large that they took possession of. The owner got them licensed and the dogs were returned.
Okay.
That's the animal control for the month of July.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, um, lastly, we have correspondence. And in our correspondence, we have letters from our town engineer, Ty and Bond, and it relates to um the efforts we have in trying to lower the speed limits um in uh College Park. And it also relates to uh establishing a school zone. And the idea that we would have to hire an engineer in order to garner the attention of a DOT and to convince them that uh we should uh be permitted um approval of both of those requests. And I don't know if you've had a chance to review um their correspondence. I know it just came in today, but um they've given us an estimate for both tasks. But interestingly enough, they they sort of concur with DOT that it would not necessarily be in our best interest to do a traffic evaluation for College Park. Um, that uh perhaps we need to tackle this a different way. Um, they don't believe that the geometry of the roads would support um a reduction. And in particular, we're talking about uh Cornell and I think it's they are that have the the long runs, the small tangents. I think DOT has sort of made clear that they don't believe speed limits are necessarily um, you know, appropriate for those small roads, because people can't get up the speed if it's less than a quarter of a mile in uh length for the tangent. And I think we may have covered this at the last meeting, but you know, they reference um the traveled speed of folks. Um, and here is, just for the folks at home, I'll share this. We have the graphs. Um, here we are at Cornell Avenue. This is our speed trailer, by the way, produces this kind of data for us to show um, show us how fast folks are going. And you see here uh during this period heading north on Cornell, a total of six hundred and twenty-nine cars um were recorded for their speeds. And you can see the overwhelming majority of the drivers are in fact um traveling at less than thirty miles an hour. And in fact, they only recorded like one or two drivers that were going above thirty-five. So that was interesting data, I think. Um, here we have volume again. This is during the hour of the day and give you some idea of when most of the traffic is. It seems to be evening rush hour, if you will, five through seven PM. And um six hundred and twenty-nine cars for that neighborhood. And so this was some of the uh information that our engineers looked at. And as a reminder, the tack that we are taking is now to ask Albany for authorization so that we, local municipalities, can make these determinations ourselves. Um, and so uh the supervisors and mayors will be meeting next week and we'll have a discussion about that. Uh, many of them have uh thrown their support behind this effort. And I know that Assemblyman Cahill's office is uh taking a look into what they can do to uh help support us in in that endeavor. So that's all I have for correspondence. Does anyone else have anything before we conclude tonight's meeting? If not, okay, thank you very much uh for the folks at home. Be safe, uh, I know that tomorrow there is, I'm sorry to say, yet another um warning related to weather, storm warning, that there is supposed to be um significant winds that may cause trees uh to go down and a loss of electricity. So we'll send out a notification in the morning, now reiterating that. And um you may wish to sign up for notifications from Central Hudson. They have a service also that can let you know um expected restorations for power outages. Okay, very good. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we close the meeting of August twenty-sixth. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you very much, Bill O'Neil. All in favor, Christine Kane?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Bill Hamel? Very good. Deanna Cochran, congratulations on your first uh town board meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Good job, yeah.
Nice job. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Have a safe evening.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye.
Thank you, Robert.
Bye.